Order the regular meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission on January the 9th, revised, okay? The first thing we'll do is we'll have order and roll call, and then we'll have pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Jeff Watson.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Ellen Carrick.
Here.
Vicki Good.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Jerry Penland.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
And John Devoe.
Here.
Full house tonight.
You will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Collection of officers.
Mr. Chair, at the first meeting of every year, the committee or the commission chooses a chairman and a vice chairman, so it's up to you to make nominations and take a vote. I nominate John Devoe to be chairman once again. We can vote on that now and wait for vice chair.
I nominate Jeff to be vice chairman.
Second.
That way it's simpler.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Can you do that as one motion?
You can do it as one motion. So, the motion is John Devoe for chairman and vice chairman Jeff Watson. And I shall do roll call. Lee Brown.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
Yes.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
John Devoe.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Approved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for December 12th. Anybody have any questions, changes, adjustments to them? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of December 12th. So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item five, public hearings. FHDP 19-001, request for flood hazard development permit adjacent to the East Fork Fountain Creek by Jay Garvins applicant and property owner for eight townhomes, four duplexes on lots one through four, block seven, Foster's addition, excluding part north half adjacent to the vacated alley at reception number 628697, 114 Baldwin Street, in the community commercial zone. This was tabled from 12/12/2019, and I think we're going to get asked to move.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a brief presentation, and in order to see it, because of some of the AV equipment malfunctions we're having, the entire committee is going to have to move behind this row so you can see the TV screen. So bring your PowerPoint paper presentation with you, because that's what I will be presenting, and whatever else you need. So if you sit, because this is the only TV facing the audience that actually--
You mean the other side?
Yeah, you gotta sit on the other side, sorry. You have to sit here, John, on this side, otherwise you're too far away, you can't see over there.
I can't see it at all.
All right, thank you. Tonight we are here, January 9th, 2020, for the Planning Commission public hearing for the flood hazard development permit for the Grace Town Homes within the East Fork of Fountain Creek. Per municipal code section Title 20, a flood hazard development permit is required before construction begins within any special flood hazard area, SFHA, and the Planning Commission is the authority to issue a flood hazard development permit. So just a little bit of terminology before we begin. This was the illustration that depicted the characteristics of a floodplain that was in the staff report. What it shows is the range of the floodplain, and that is the 100-year floodplain, which is a chance, one chance of flooding in 100 years or better, 1% chance every year. So that is the 100-year floodplain. The floodway is actually the, usually demarked by some sort of erosion where there has been some flooding, and that's depicted as the floodway. A typical channel, the normal channel, is where there might be actual water in this channel, and so the flood fringe is the other side of the floodway as it's marked, and floodway and the flood fringe combined are what are the floodplain. So, and here's another illustration, again, the 100-year floodplain, the floodway, and the fringe, and this is showing water in all of it up to the 100-year floodplain. So, that's just an idea, characteristics of the flood fringe and the floodplain and the floodway for your benefit, since the Planning Commission gets maybe a flood hazard development permit once a year.
Or is the base flood elevation?
The base flood elevation is the elevation that's been determined to flood at the level where there might be flooding, and then you build, if you are building in the floodway or the flood fringe, that is the elevation you have to build above. So that's the level that's been established for flooding, to protect from flooding. All right. So the site we are looking at today is depicted by this red star, and my mouse doesn't work, so you'll see me moving my hand, but I'll try to describe it in the image as best I can. So the floodway is depicted on this illustration with the hatching, with the narrow hatching that goes through this shaded area that goes all the way down to Highway 24. And the 100-year floodplain, and so that includes the floodway and the flood fringe on both sides of the floodway, is shown in the blue shading. The site that we're looking at again is this red star area, so the entire site is this rectangle. On the right-hand side is Baldwin Street, on the left-hand side is Boundary. To the north, you can see the two green lines which depict the Grace Avenue right-of-way, a 50-foot right-of-way, and you can see Grace Avenue further to the west, and it'll ultimately intersect with Highway 24 and Laurel Street. At any rate, it's not improved right now, but you can see to the north is the Grace right-of-way, and the applicants are proposing to improve that. And you can see how the floodway cuts through almost half of this site, and the floodplain, I'm sorry, floodway does cut through the southern portion of it. So this is a better show, depiction of what's on-site right now. So again, this is Baldwin Street on the right of the site. To the left, you can see Grace Avenue to the north and the unimproved portion of Grace Avenue. You can see Jimmy John's south of Grace Avenue. The site itself contains an old barn, many of you have probably driven by it. It's currently unoccupied right now. The site is owned by the applicant, the property owner is Jay Garvins, and he is here tonight and will be speaking. To the west of the site, between Boundary Street and the site itself, the yellow Boundary, there have been three homes that have been built, so there are three single-family residences on what right now is depicted as a vacant lot. And then, of course, to the southwest, there are two homes and vacant land immediately to the south of the site. Forest Service, the Colorado State Forest Service is immediately to the north of the Grace Avenue right-of-way, and the Gateway Elementary School is immediately to the right or east of Baldwin Street, and of course, the elementary school and the high school and all of those facilities are right there.
We're on the previous slide.
On this one?
No. So, yeah, there we go. I have, I have the staff recording, I certainly do here, depicting more of the channel, what the stream is, than this particular site.
Right, actually, that's what the next one will show.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that one was from Google Earth, and it didn't show the floodplain. But this one does. This is a map that we've taken from the Teller County Assessors website, which shows the recorded floodway in hatching as you go north to south, and the flow within this floodway of water is to the south, flows south, that's what that big red arrow is showing. Again, the floodway is shown hatched, and in blue is the limits of the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain. You can see Baldwin Street, most of the floodway to the north of this site is in the Baldwin Street right-of-way, but you can see where the floodway then cuts to the southeast corner of this site, and you can see where almost half of the site is within the 100-year floodplain. This also shows two of the homes that were built at the time this photo was published, to the left or to the west, and since this photo has been published, there is another home that has been built on that one vacant lot that you see just south of the Grace right-of-way. You can see the Boundary of the Grace right-of-way, 50-foot wide, and immediately to the north is the Forest Service, so that gives you an idea of what is existing. On the site itself, you can see that the Baldwin Street right-of-way has a sidewalk on the east side, it's that kind of white line, and then it gets obliterated by the floodplain, but that's a sidewalk on the east side. There is no sidewalk on the west side of Baldwin Street right-of-way. There are bits and pieces of asphalt, driveways that have been in existence for some time, but no official sidewalk on the west side of Baldwin Street, and the applicant is not proposing one at this time. You can see that on Boundary Avenue, so the applicant will be building Grace Avenue as it connects with Boundary to the west till it accesses the site, and we'll have site plans later on, but on Boundary Street, for instance, along the single-family residences, there is no sidewalk there either. There are bits and pieces of sidewalk adjacent to the Forest Service property, adjacent to the CIRC property here, opposite west of the Forest Service site, and then opposite, adjacent to Jimmy John's on Boundary, there's also a sidewalk. At any rate, the Grace Avenue road will be extended so that it accesses this site. So this shows the limits of the floodplain within this site. These are some photos, that's the barn that we're looking at. We're standing on the, we're standing on Baldwin Street looking north into the site, and you can see the barn that currently exists right now and the fence that is still up right now, and it gives you an idea of what is existing on the site, what it looks like. It's very flat, which is characteristic of a floodplain. You can see the sidewalk on the east side of Baldwin, but you can see where there is no sidewalk on the west side of Baldwin. Now, this is a looking on Baldwin, that should say Baldwin Street, not Baldwin Avenue, I apologize for that. Looking on Baldwin Street, looking south, you can see there's the chain link fence for the Forest Service corner for their property, then you have a 50-foot right-of-way, and then you have the property that we are talking about today. So this gives you an idea of some of the electric service that exists out here, and again, the edge of the Baldwin Street right-of-way here to the west has no improvements, although there are some culverts that have been here historically, you can see some of the culverts, and all of this will be reviewed by the, with the drainage study for drainage and any improvements. And again, in this area, this is the floodway for the most part along Baldwin Ave, and the applicant is not proposing any construction within the floodway on any part of the site, or it will not impact the floodway along Baldwin Street. So this is a photo showing you some of the existing vegetation and the existing structures that exist. So this is the site plan showing you the existing conditions. This, on the site itself, which is identified in red, and all the property lines for surrounding properties are identified in bold red lines. The existing building you can see is hatched on the site, and then in blue, immediately to the west, is in a dash-dot line, is the floodplain, and you can see how it sort of traverses the site. And then in a dark blue, two parallel lines is the floodway. The yellow lines, as you go east on this site, is the edge of asphalt for Baldwin Street. So you can see that Baldwin Street is kind of pushed a little bit to the east, and then there's that drainage and dirt that is unimproved along the west side from the edge of pavement. You can see the floodway, how most of it is within the Baldwin Street area, and then it sort of catches at that northeast corner, and the floodway flows south into the southeast area. So those are the existing conditions on-site. You can see Grace Avenue, you can see it is unimproved at this point. There are some existing large trees. The applicant is going to, to do, if possible, preserve as many trees within this right-of-way to mitigate the impact of the additional traffic that these homes will bring. There'll also be rain gardens, he's proposing, and actually, that's what the next one shows. So here is where they're proposing to put the proposed Grace Avenue improvement. To the north of that improvement, you see a green rectangular depiction, a graphic area, rectangle, that is a proposed rain garden, and there's two other proposed rain gardens, one adjacent and east of the northeast building, and it's shown in green, and then south of the southwest building and the southeast building, there's that green area. Those are the rain gardens they're proposing, which will help with the detention and the flooding and the flow of water over this site. John?
I've never heard the term rain garden before. Is it a retention fund?
It's, it's the form that this applicant has chosen to label the detention and the way that they're controlling the flow of water over this site, and when they come up and speak, you can ask them the details of what will be in this rain garden. But essentially, it'll be vegetated to help capture the water. All right, so those are, the first important thing to notice is the location of the proposed Grace Avenue, and you can see that it goes all the way east but stops short of the floodway, so it does not impact the floodway. And you can see that the rain gardens are proposed, there's three of them on this site. You can see that the buildings themselves, the parking, the interior driveways, none of them impact the floodway. So the floodway is undisturbed. Now, portions of all of these are in the floodplain, and you can see the floodplain with that blue dashed line, and what the applicant has designed is that for each building, the base flood elevation, which is the elevation at which a 100-year may flood to, is shown, and it's also showing the finished floor elevation, and the standards require that it be at least a foot above. So for instance, if you look at the northeast building, the base flood elevation is 8,433.9 feet. The finished floor elevation of the first habitable space, which is not the garage space, it's the space, it's the second story, is 8,442.2 feet for the northeast building. And as you look at each building, you can see that it is at least, the finished floor elevation is at least one foot above, which is the standard in the regulations, so. And the applicant is proposing to do that for all four buildings, even though the northwest building is outside of the floodplain. The yellow graphic indicates sidewalks that the applicant is proposing. So you can see he's proposing a sidewalk to the south of Grace Avenue, and then it curls around that little cul-de-sac, and then I've shown the sidewalk that's adjacent to the east side of Baldwin Street, which is existing. So the sidewalks curb and gutter along Grace Avenue are required. The applicant has the opportunity to build those or submit fees in lieu, which we will ask for. We are proposing fees in lieu, and we will negotiate that with the applicant. So that's just the site plan. This is part of the elevations, these were all submitted with the staff report that was distributed to the Planning Commission. What this shows is, first of all, some of the flood-resistant materials that the applicant proposes to use, including the stone veneer along the base of the buildings, and these louvers, which are specifically designed to allow floodwaters to penetrate and to come through the garage. So this is designed to flood. So in reviewing any flood hazard development permit, we review it, the city reviews it to comply with Title 20, which is provisions for flood hazard reduction. Section 10, section point 20, 05, 01, 0 are the general standards. It deals with anchoring, construction materials and methods, utilities, and subdivision and development. So the applicant is proposing footings. The footings will be designed to withstand hydraulic and hydrostatic pressures. Construction materials and methods, as I've already mentioned, they will be doing those louvers to allow for the water to flow through the ground floor, the garages, the uninhabitable spaces of these structures, and the construction materials will be flood-resistant and stone and able to withstand water. Utilities are also designed to withstand any water or flooding, they will be sealed so that water doesn't, it doesn't contaminate either way, same with the sewer lines, and they will all be built and constructed to our standards. The applicant will ultimately propose a plat, a townhouse plat for each unit, so each unit will be individually owned, and there'll be covenants that will be submitted with that townhouse plat. The townhouse plat is an administrative review and will be one of the last things to come in. It'll come in once the walls start to go up, because with any townhouse plat, you need to be able to delineate space in terms of the wall, the common walls. Section 20.05.020 are the specific standards. It deals with the residential construction, openings, and soil erosion and landscaping. The applicant did submit a preliminary soil erosion control and landscaping plan. Those will be submitted in final form with the zoning development permit that comes with the building permit application, and will meet all of our standards for grading and erosion control and landscaping. Openings, I already talked a little bit about openings in the structures with the louvers that the applicant is proposing, which is a standard floodproofing design, and then the residential construction was, is all going to be reviewed with the building permit, and we will have a city engineer on hand by the time the building permit comes in. Our city engineer has experience and was a floodplain manager, we are excited to have her on board. The building permit when it comes in will be reviewed for floodproofing and flood-resistant materials. Floodways, again, there is no impact to this floodway, that is one of the conditions that is recommended. The floodway, our standards require that there be a base flood elevation established, and there is, and the applicant has shown those flood elevations on the site plans. The standards require that there be no encroachments in the floodway, and the applicant has complied with that, and the floodway standards also require that they comply with section 20.05, which I went through just two minutes ago. Finally, section 20.05.040 deals with areas adjacent to the special flood hazard area, so that is areas outside of the 100-year floodplain, includes part of the site and areas adjacent to the site. And while those need not comply with section 20.05 for all of those standards, we do look, when construction comes in, adjacent to a floodplain, that they minimize flood damage, that there's adequate drainage, and that they obtain all the appropriate approvals and permits needed. So this application was referred to the adjacent property owners, everybody within 150 feet. We published tonight's hearing in the Pike's Peak Courier, and we have put posters on-site advertising tonight's hearing. We have sent this application twice to a third-party review. JR Engineering reviewed the engineering standards for us, since we did not have a city engineer on hand, and they did review it, and the applicant did make revisions to the application, and what you're seeing today is approved by JR Engineering in terms of the flood hazard design. We also sent this application to city departments, the Public Works Department and the Utilities Department have reviewed it. They did have comments, but the comments were more related to the civil and engineering and construction drawings, things like the depth of a water line and the depth of the sewer line and those types of things, which will be reviewed in detail when we get civil drawings with the infrastructure zoning development permit and with the building permit and the zoning development permit that comes with the building permit. We also sent it out to the northeast Teller County Fire Protection District. They had no concerns with the flood hazard, and they will have comments when we get to the civil engineering drawings. IRE, Black Hill, CenturyLink, TDS Telecom, many of these services exist in the area, and as the applicant constructs within this site, will have to potentially relocate some of this or come up with a different design. So all of it will be flood compliant. So staff does recommend approval of flood hazard development permit 1901, the Grace Town Homes, to construct four residential duplexes, eight single-family units, and the extension of Grace Avenue in the East Fork of Fountain Creek Special Flood Hazard Area on lots one to four, block seven, Foster's addition, with an address of 114 Baldwin Street, in the Community Commercial Zone District as requested by Jay Garvins, subject to nine conditions, and I am going to go through these nine conditions. One, we are requiring that they make some final adjustments to the site plan for the flood hazard development permit. They are very minor changes, but things like redrawing the disturbance of grading so that it only stays on-site, and other very minor changes just to update that site plan. Number two, prior to any land disturbance anywhere on the site, whether it's in the right-of-way or on the actual lots where the buildings will be, we're asking for A through F evidence of the survey and physical location actually physically staked and flagged on-site for the floodway and the 100-year floodplain. We're also asking for a final infrastructure zoning development permit, complete with all the civil drawings for the road, the utilities, the installation of all the services, and that will be reviewed by staff. We also require the final stormwater management plan issued by the state. That is required for any land area that is disturbed that is greater than one acre, and a rough calculation on this site indicates that it's about 1.05 acres in size if you include the Grace Avenue right-of-way. So their engineer, who's been working with them on all of this, will go through the state to get that stormwater management plan issued. We need the final landscape plan, we are asking for some changes. They had indicated some landscaping within the floodway, and again, we don't want any disturbance in the floodway, so we're asking them to move some of those trees, and they will do that. We're also asking for a final grading permit and payment for fees in lieu with this zoning development permit, and that is prior to any land disturbance, so there's still some more design to happen and civil construction drawings to be submitted. Number three, prior to issuance of a building permit, we'd like to see approval of the final building zoning development permit for each unit or each duplex, depending on how they phase this, complete with all applicable fees that go with a building permit, including water and sewer tabs, and then in addition to the landscape plan, every tree removed from the site shall be replaced with a tree of highest caliber or height possible. That includes the trees that are in the right-of-way, so if they're taking three trees down in the Grace Avenue right-of-way, we're asking that they replace those trees somewhere on the site or in the right-of-way to mitigate the removal of the large trees that exist right now. And further, the number of trees and shrubs north and east of the single-family residence at the corner of Grace Avenue and Boundary shall be increased to mitigate the impact to that one little corner lot. The floodway and 100-year floodplain shall be surveyed and staked and flagged on-site prior to building permit issuance. Condition number four, prior to conveyance of any unit to an individual, we're asking for the approval of the townhouse plat with applicable fees, showing the lot configurations of the townhouse, which may include a little bit of land on each side and common area. And the plat itself will have a note, a hazard note, a disclosure statement stating where the floodway is, where the floodplain is, and it will have a note asking for no disturbance to those hazard areas. All right. Condition number five, there shall be no impact to the floodway in any way. That means no grading, no landscaping, no fill, no deposit, no deposition of debris, no parking of vehicles, or any other change, alteration, or disturbance of the existing floodway. Flood mitigating louvers shall be installed in the garage on all four buildings, all eight units. In addition to meeting all the building code and city standards, road, utility services, building design, construction, and installation shall in every case consider materials and methods that are resistant to flood damage, that reduce exposure to flood damage, and that minimize flood damage. And that is a consideration of this flood hazard permit, a condition of this permit, but also will be a consideration of every application forthwith. Number eight, owners are encouraged to procure flood insurance to protect themselves, the buildings and any possessions in the event of a flood. We can't make anyone buy insurance, but we are encouraging it. On-site signage must be approved by a separate sign permit, that would include any signage for the entire residential development. So staff does-- So staff does, with these conditions, recommend approval of this flood hazard development permit. We have the property owner here, Mr. Jay Garvins, and we have his contractor Dwight Ringler here, and they are available and will do a brief presentation. I can answer questions now or we can wait till after they're done. How would the committee like to proceed? The commission?
I just have one question. Are we talking standing water or is there running water according to the 100-year flood?
Well, there's really no water in the flood fringe and if you were to go out to the site today, there's no water in the floodway right now. So there's...
For a 100-year flood though, is it more concerned about standing water or is it going to be running?
Running water, flowing water.
Very shallow.
And yet, John?
You know, it might be just for us to stay here.
Okay.
Because it'd be us.
Yep, he can use the...
We can do that, we can do that. We'll start the discussion.
Okay.
Might be easier for...
So why don't I call the applicant? I'll introduce Jay Garvins and Dwight Ringler. Dwight, why don't you come up as well because they might have engineering or construction questions and you may as well stand up with Jay.
I would stand up. He'd be sure. He'd want to ask. I'm Jay Garvins. I introduce myself to some of you, but for those of you ahead, Jay Garvins, my wife Marlo bought this property. I'm not often told that I need to speak into a microphone, so that's good. My military background helped me project my voice. I am Jay Garvins. My wife and I, Marlo, bought this property in May of this year. And first of all, I want to thank Sally and Laura for all their help because as you can see, this is very complex and goes into great depth and especially Laura for this presentation. Our engineer, Andy, made all of the site designs, who I will share with you as company and everything. But there's been hundreds of hours into this and I want to personally thank you because you've done so much work. Your PowerPoint is amazing. It would pass all standards. But my wife and I live down in Ivy Wild off of Seventeen Polo area, kind of what I call the poor man's Broadmoor down by Southgate. And we bought this land because my wife has fallen in love with Woodland Park and the mountains, of course, and our eventual goal is to retire up here. In fact, there's a good possibility that one of these units will be Marlo and mine. If not, we'd like to do several developments like this in town and have one of them become First and foremost, introduce, I'm the owner and the developer and Dwight Ringler here. He's also a partner in the development, but also he's an A1 contractor and has been in contracting for 35 years. He and I have had a friendship going on 20 years now. And I've kind of taken him under my wing for finances and he's taken me under his wing for construction and he has an impeccable reputation. But also, our team wouldn't be complete without Andy Jessick and Jessick Engineering and Consulting. He's the one that has done all of the designs that you see for the site and done all the compliance with the flood work and the seeking of the flood hazard development permit. With all of the hours we've spent and with my military background, I'm pretty sure that at the end I'll earn my flood compliance certificate like I did in the military because it's been an interesting road and I welcome that. And our end goal is just to add and beautify the Woodland Park, which I'll share. Andy Jessick is our engineer, like I stated, but John Davis, more than 30 years in the architectural industry. As you start to see the renderings and eventually the master plans for all of the individual townhomes and individual units is done by John Davis. And really what I want to share with you to start off is what I did in, beginning with city planning staff and the ladies, to just say, why in the world were a couple buying a piece of land in Woodland Park, let alone a piece of land in a floodplain? And I submitted the application of the Grace Town Home Project, as Laura and I named it. And the land is located on Baldwin, like you're familiar with. The project is a residential use in a commercial zone and the site plan will have primary access from Grace, like she stated. And as you enter into the site, you'll see from the north, there's going to be four individual structures, all facing north. This is really important because from the initial inception of the plan of houses being drawn on napkins, we want to make sure that everything is safe and sustainable and it's particularly and intentionally put in place that all of the garage doors open to the north and all of the louvers go to the south so there is any free flow of water because that's going to leave the least amount of impact on the land and make the most sustainability and the safety of the homes that my wife and I and others have on the property. As you look into the individual units, you'll see that each structure contains two townhomes and that's going to be in the architectural renderings. So if you look at these buildings, you see those outcroppings and those are the stairwells going up to the second and third floor and they're basically two-story houses set on top of a garage. And the garage is more than 14 feet above the floodplain before you get into residential area and the free flow of the garage and the louvers allows that water to move through. And like you stated, in a flow of water, there's no one that states that there'll be a pooling of water. And then each of these units is the most important thing. Each one of these units is 1,500 square feet, so the building is 3,000. There's three bedrooms and three baths and I've provided affordable housing for low-income families now for 20 years in mortgage. And I do a radio show and I talk to people about sustainable, affordable housing. And my wife and I have eight houses and every single one of them has a single working professional mom and kids. And it's really tough to buy affordable houses now. And these are going to be affordable and our price point is below $300,000, which for 1,500, I mean 1,500 square feet is less than $200 a square foot, which is 30 to 40 dollars below the square foot average now in the city. So when I say affordable housing, we really want to get brand-new couples in there like Courtney and a couple of the others that live on Boundary. But most importantly, it's for those first-time homebuyers and the families that come in that have a need for affordability. And then we've also designed them so every single unit at an angle. If you put Pike's Peak down here from the deck, has a view of Pike's Peak and as you would go over 24 and as you go in towards Cascade and Manitou in that view. And then each one will also have a deck that comes from the south side. And the biggest thing is we're just looking forward to adding to the beautification of Woodland Park, but also the accessibility. Each one of these homes for eight families, which is primarily meant, these are not multifamily dwellings. These are meant for individual families to come in and take part in the Woodland Park community, but not driving distance. This is a single mom or a single dad that can take their child's hand and walk across the street and go right to the elementary school and to the aquatic center. That's why Laura and I have talked so much about sidewalks because we know this is going to be a community throwaway and we want it to be very appealing. But also, it's less than three blocks from Highway 24 and the Historic Dinosaur Museum and Jimmy John's is in the backyard. So that brings a sense of community. That was my goal and that was Marlo's goal when we set out and it's been Dwight's amazing engineering of our vision to bring it to life because it started out as a napkin, didn't it?
It always starts out as a napkin.
And then before I open it up for questions, I just want to make sure that I share that I think we've been, we've been doing this since August and Sally and especially Laura have been very, very helpful. And you guys saw that long list of conditions. Well, that used to be eight and now we're down to like 15, so we're really encouraged. And with that, I'm going to open it up to questions to either the planning commission or anybody else in the area that is just joining from the community.
The way we kind of do this...
Okay.
Probably be the appropriate time for us to move back there.
Perfect.
And secondly, we'll have questions from the commission. And we're going to open up a public hearing.
Great.
And we'll have a sign up sheet. I hope you have one for that point. Do you have any questions?
Perfect. Thanks, John. We'll do that then.
Stay up here, John.
Sure, I sure will. I'm going to grab my... And then I'm going to keep off to the side, this is still going in case they have questions. Whatever you want to do, John, it's handled.
Okay. At this point, we would go to the item of council asks questions of staff and applicant. So anybody would like to?
For staff, is there any historical documentation of the frequency of flooding of this particular property?
You know, there's been numerous LOMARs that have been done within this area. A LOMAR is a letter of map revision. So that was done in 2010 with FEMA as far as documentation of flooding.
Yeah, I mean, is there any history of that?
This is not an area of trouble.
Doesn't look like it, just wondering.
It sheet flows across the grassy area right now. Most of the catch basin is actually on the east side of Baldwin where there is a much larger ditch line. And so, yeah, we don't have a lot of experience with, other than the sheet flow, a very low level.
No history, but there's certainly been a lot of study in this area.
And just to add to that, 1988 is when Woodland Park was established with the floodplains that we have. And that was done through primarily topography to identify the most lowest-laying land as well as existing conditions where there may, were channels, like where Fountain Creek is really obvious. But this is the very north end of this reach, so it's the very beginning of the regulated FEMA floodplain.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this point?
I have two questions of the applicant.
Okay.
Number one, do you agree with the conditions as proposed in the staff report tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Sure.
I know Laura's worked very hard at every single one of those items.
Second question. I'll remember it in there.
Somebody else? Why he's checking his notes?
Go ahead if you're going that way.
Doesn't make any difference.
Okay. Will homeowners be able to buy insurance on this, on their property?
Yes.
You're pretty sure?
Yes.
And can I address that? We are encouraging everybody to purchase flood insurance, but because we have the intent to be affordable, that's going to be what's ever in their garage, that even FEMA or Lords of London, which is an actual commercial one, because I have flood insurances and help people do it, anything that is 18, 12 inches or more above the floodplain, doesn't even require flood insurance on the structure. That's why Laura referenced that. But on any given unit, they can do it and mostly if they want insurance for things in the flood fringe. There's nothing in the floodway, but in the flood fringe would be any implements inside the garage.
No, I understand how flood insurance works. I was in the insurance business, but insurance companies themselves, your basic insurance, not the government FEMA insurance, are getting pretty picky about who they're going to insure and where the property is located. So if you go to State Farm, for example, will State Farm provide coverage for structures in a floodplain like this?
Actually, yes. And the only reason I state that is not as much as the owner. I also own a mortgage company. And before we did the design, because affordability was the end route, that the top four insurance agencies that I went through, which was actually Farmers, Allstate, GEICO, and USAA, all through the plans, the plots, have said that actually it's a great design because it's so far above the floodplain. And of course, their one, number one concern was is the sustainability of items that might come in contact and we have that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. That's very important because to the end buyer, that's a great concern.
Go ahead.
I think it's amazing that you are going to be able to price these under 300,000 considering all the constraints and the flood-resistant materials that you need to...
I know, I am going to negotiate with utilities. They're back and forth about our fees because they're working with us in a great deal to do that. And affordability, right, Laura, from our very first conversation, is what we want to do because that makes our community attractive. I think somebody had a question about a flood garden.
Rain garden.
Rain gardening. Because we have rain and not floods. But any questions?
I have one. Since you own a mortgage company, if somebody came to you and wanted to get a loan on that, would you require they have flood insurance?
No, because it's not the law. So I can recommend.
Okay.
And what I would tell you is there's only one unit that I would recommend that they have flood insurance and that's the southeast. And you guys could see on the picture, that's the only one that it really touches. We have all of them flood resistant, but the northwest one, John, isn't even in the flood fringe. It's not even in the floodplain where if you go into, in totality, you have three out of the eight units that don't even touch the floodway. But because especially when people come in to buy a house, a lot of times they're buying community and they're buying security, for these units, your flood insurance with Lords of London are going to be less than $500 a year. So that would be something that we would just weigh in front of them and I'm kind of the guide. And then they, you know, as a couple, always turn to themselves and make the decision or between the mother and the daughter or whoever's buying it.
The last question I have at this time is that on your garage, everything is north.
Mostly north, yes.
Traditionally in this town, for every place we've put together a development, I'm thinking of the Adobe one over off of Forest Edge, there's enough ice there to form a skating rink because there is no melting. No melting.
Uh-huh.
Maybe in June. So what I'm saying is I know what you're doing for adopting for flood, but where's the snow going to go rather than melt back into that area? That's, that's a concern I've got because we've had nothing but problems with north exposure.
Sure. And then, John, if you can look at the design or anybody can in the future, you see each of the buildings go one, two, three, four. We specifically designed the cul-de-sac with the Department of Plow, I call it, because I'm a layman term guy, where first of all, on Grace, they come in and they do kind of like a J-shaped plow. So they come and do the street and then they take care of that one driveway. Everybody else is a plow with out and out, so you go down and you go out. So you literally can come take a turn with a snow blower or with a plow and push it all out to the perimeters right away. We did that because they're north-facing.
So those parking lots, they're, they're going to be emptied out of the snow and put in the cul-de-sac?
No, the cul-de-sac itself is designed, the curb and gutter is designed in the cul-de-sac to push the snow past the cul-de-sac. That's what...
No, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'm talking about getting out of the parking lots where you go in the building.
Oh, the individual driveways?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why we put two garages per residence. So there's going to be eight garages here and if you do it, if anything, you push the snow beyond the garages right into the individual parking spaces there or into the back of the cars there.
Sure.
You can get it away, but that, of course, is just like an individual right of the house themselves, how they remove snow.
Are those louvers that are on the back of the garage, are those rodent, mice-proof?
Yes.
Because I just know how that, that works around here.
I do.
When it gets cold out. When it gets cold out.
And another side note is, one of the most brilliant things is that we have stairways, John, but even for the rodents and all of that stuff, there's a fire door on every single floor, which is nice, so as long as they keep that closed, hopefully they will for heat, then that will help any moisture and/or any rodents or anything, but the louvers are rodent proof.
Okay, very good.
Thanks a lot.
That's all I have. Did you remember your question?
Yes, I did.
No, you go.
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens.
Great approach, certainly do appreciate that. Do you anticipate, but to tell everybody the principle about a rain garden, and then talk about how much drainage water will actually leave the site after they're infiltrated into the garden itself?
Well, as far as the percentage, I couldn't tell you.
Dwight, come up to the microphone.
He doesn't like the microphone.
I haven't heard a lot of voice, so.
Name, rank, and serial number?
Dwight Rengler, builder. Jay's the talker, I'm the worker. The rain gardens have been designed, it's a three-tier system, it's about a three-inch cobble, about sixteen inches, then it's about an inch and a half, like crushed concrete, and then there's a fine sand loom that goes over all of that, so that the water doesn't just saturate through, it slowly filters through the sand. Now, on the sand, after it's there for a while, of course, it'll have vegetation on it, which will hold the water even more. It won't ever be like a mosquito trap, to where it's a pond, it'll always filter.
Does that help you learn?
Last part of that question was, how much water will actually leave the site, as compared to how much will actually infiltrate?
You know, I'd have to say that would depend on the deluge of water. I don't have the exact percentages of saturation compared to input of water, but the norm up here, I don't think much water's gonna be leaving the site, for what the rain capacities that we get up here.
The city standards require that the historic, it can only leave at the historic rates, so they cannot generate additional flow off the site. It is a Q value of historic.
And staff and JR Engineering is pretty comfortable with the design concept, this will happen with this project?
Yes, they've submitted a detailed drainage plan, which will be submitted in final design and reviewed by the city engineer when she gets on board.
Okay.
And it will meet our city standards.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions at this time? Ken?
Yeah, let's go back to the rain garden a little bit. I understand the concept and how it's all constructed, is there vegetation in the rain garden?
There will be, eventually.
Yeah, there will be eventually, not at the beginning, but grass will form, and as water and seed comes in, we actually, the difference between a retention pond and a rain garden is that we encourage vegetation, but it's still a saturated map.
So is there any maintenance required on this?
No.
And then I have to go.
The rain gardens will be the responsibility of the homeowners association, which will be established with the townhouse plat, and they will be responsible for maintenance, if any is required.
Including the rain garden proposed on Grace Avenue?
Yes. Well, that one, actually that one might be assumed by the city, since it's in their city right of way.
Right. Also, on Grace Avenue, I know we just put Pike's Peak through to make better connectivity through the city for traffic, does it make sense for Grace to extend further east?
One of the reasons it wasn't proposed that way was because of the floodway, and any disturbance through the floodway would have required some extensive designs and drawings through the FEMA, through FEMA.
So this was an economic decision, not to do that?
No, this was a reduction of impact to the floodway, that's why they stopped short of the floodway, they did not want to impact the floodway, and that's the reason.
They being the client, the applicant.
And the city, as well, our standards require that there be no impact to the floodway, and if they do impact the floodway, then it has to be fully engineered and receive FEMA approval. So, the proposal was not to impact the floodway, and it meets all our standards.
And if I might add, a large component, at least 50% of the decision in my proposal for the cul-de-sac was for safety and the children, so it's not a high-speed throughway, but actually a cul-de-sac at the end of an attractive townhome development.
Okay, the other thing, you mentioned, Mr. Garvins, about walking across the street to the school. There's no pedestrian connection to the street, or to Baldwin, or the sidewalk across the way.
This would be mid-block, and we would discourage any kind of, right there, like just crossing, right there at Baldwin from Grace.
We would go up a block and over, the kids already come for Jimmy John's as it is.
Yeah, and there's no sidewalk on the west side, but there is space if children are or adults, if anyone wants to walk on that side, there's not gonna be sidewalks, we're not encouraging it.
And after the photos you presented, there's already a pedestrian path down Grace, so I just wanted to see, it seems logical that there'd be a connection there, at least pedestrian-wise, I guess.
It is possible to build.
Since we're not doing any improvements in the floodway, we're just gonna have another dirt path across that, similar to what exists now.
It is possible, once we go through the civil construction design drawings, to receive fees and lieu for a sidewalk along Grace Avenue, and instead of actually constructing along Grace Avenue, we could use those fees to construct north of the site, up to the floodway. We wouldn't want to construct a sidewalk in the floodway. I mean, the city does not want to bear the burden of that cost.
And then, the northeast building, looks like the driveway access is from the north, as you mentioned, all the garage doors are on the north, I'm assuming there's no parking in that area because of the turnaround requirements for the cul-de-sac? Is that correct?
There's a two-car enclosed garage for each residence, and then along the north side and south, and southeast and west side, there are parking spaces, but none that are planned around that kind of J-shaped cul-de-sac.
And then the.
But there is parking along the street there, over by the yellow portion, or the west side of the entrance on the south side of Grace.
Street parking on Grace, but I was just concerned about access to the driveways and having proper turning clearances at the cul-de-sac.
Right, and of course, safety for the fire protection district is key and tantamount to this development and this design, and they will review it. They did look at these preliminary drawings and had no concerns or issues.
Because they were within the turn rate of standard, as already published.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
Actually, I've got a question on item number five, requirement for the city that the floodway be marked prior to excavation, excavation? Can I talk? Question that I have is on the building that is the southeast side, it looks like you're very, very close to being in that waterway.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna be supervised to make sure that they do not?
Yes.
Go beyond what they should?
Our city inspector.
And the integrity on a dated, almost on a weekly basis? If you have somebody come in and they take out six foot, that could be very devastating to that area.
Yeah, we, after the recommendations to have the floodway and the floodplain staked so you could see them, I've talked to Jay about putting a fence, it could be a four-foot fence or a silt fence, that's two-foot high, that designates a no-pass zone, so you don't encroach on that floodway. And it's, we can, we can even install signs that say, you know, do not disturb, do not pass, no trespassing, whatever, if it'll help, but we're gonna close off a boundary so that there is a definite point not to cross.
Can it be also stated in item number five, that the city must be notified if the, if that has been compromised?
That's a great idea.
Within 24 hours, or?
I think you need to realize that we have a construction inspector, and he does a windshield inspection of every single project on a daily basis. So he is monitoring these sites daily, and will be on top of that.
And we encourage that.
And we have free drink and sandwiches at us.
So we require that it be staked and flagged prior to any land disturbance, and also staked and flagged prior to building permit issuance, so we're gonna make sure that those stakes and flags are in there, demarking the floodplain and the floodway, and then our city inspector will be well aware of condition number five, which says no impact to the floodway.
And then also, I have one question, what is the height of the buildings?
They do not exceed 35 feet.
Okay.
And that's, that's to the rooftop.
Yep, it's the peak of the roof, per the zoning.
Okay.
Vicki, you can add an addendum to this, to require a silt fence instead of flags when we get to that point.
Yeah, the applicant has submitted an erosion control plan with BMPs, and a final plan will be submitted, which will include all the silt.
Said they're thinking about it. She can add that as a requirement.
She can, yes.
Yes. Okay. Anybody else? If not, thank you.
You're very welcome.
You're subject for recall.
Okay, I'm sure I will be.
Okay, at this point, what we'll do is open up public comment. The first one on the list was Jay, but we're not gonna call him, he's already had his tans. Mr. Labar?
No comment, there's more.
Mr. Weiger, Weaver?
No. No? No lawyers for the work session, sorry.
Okay. Anybody else would like to get up with any public comments at this point? Hearing none, we will close the public comment, okay? At this point, we probably don't need rebuttal, because nobody said anything. Okay, so what we'll do is the council, and we, this is council, I can't say the word mayor. Any other final questions you've talked, thought about, you've heard from, that you would like to ask?
One question that I do have, as you've been mentioning all of the designs for water being able to go through the building, or through, you know, certain channels and that, are they also mold resistant?
Dwight?
Well, all, all materials have a standard of mold resistance. Now, if you soak any material in water long enough, and you don't dry it, it's gonna, it's gonna cause mold. So, as a standard, they all have a mold resistance.
And that's why the statement or question earlier was paramount about whether we expect water to pass through or sit stable and dwell, that was very important.
That's whether the answer there is to remove the water, so there is some standing water.
And just add, anybody who experiences any type of water flooding, whether it's internal from the utility, or one of their HVAC, or exterior, the very first thing in a flood restoration is to get DEETS on that as soon as possible, and that would be the long-term answer, but we do have flood retardant material that's used in the entire construction on the first floor as it is.
Four-foot high, four-foot high.
Is that a wood product, or is it a masonry concrete product?
Both, the plywood that you use for sheer paneling will be a water-resistant plywood, up to four-foot, and all materials up to that four-foot, and possibly beyond, beyond, just due to design, will be a water-resistant.
But it's a wood frame construction on the lower level?
Correct, all of it.
Do you add something to what Vicki asked? Since these are garages that park underneath a living area, okay, in addition to mold, we have carbon dioxide, what are we doing to put ventilation in, so somebody doesn't leave a car running underneath there and affects everybody above them?
The buildings are designed as per Reasonable Building Code for garages. The codes that Reasonable Building declares safe for a garage is what we're building.
Can you elaborate on that?
Do you have vents already that are in the backside of the garage? So you have air circulation.
Does the interior side of the vent prevent somebody from lining them all up with shelves and tool, two boxes, so nothing goes through them? I mean, do they protrude inward, so that, so it gives an airflow through it?
They, they're not designed to protrude inside the garage as of right now.
All I'm saying is, I know what's gonna happen, it's gonna be cardboard boxes and everything else up against it after they close. You know, that, that's where everything goes until you get it put away, or sometimes that's where the workshop goes.
Right.
I'm just curious how you're addressing that.
Well, I wouldn't know how to address that after it's sold, and they own it, I don't have an answer to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one way to address that is through the covenants, that would prohibit or not allow any alteration to those louvers, or obstructions to those louvers.
Obstructions?
Yeah.
That would be a good thing to add to the covenants.
It'd be a good note in the covenants.
Okay. See, something came out of that anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, for, as a note, the building code does not have a ventilation requirement for residential garages, they do require fire separation, and will require carbon monoxide detectors on each level of the building.
Including in the garage?
On the ground level.
Okay.
That's the code?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Got it? Anybody else at this point?
I have a question for staff, and this is not directly related to the flood development permit, but it's related to the project itself, and as noted in the information in the staff report, this is four lots, that were planted. Now, we're gonna have eight units, so we've doubled the density for this particular project. With that doubling of the density, also requires four additional water taps. Where will those four water taps come from? I know, I know, with our previous plan, we've addressed allocation of water, and we know the equivalent population for, I build out using all the water, is there a pool of taps available that this applicant can tap into, excuse the pun, to secure that additional four taps?
The build-out scenario is an estimate, and we have the available water and taps right now, in fact, there are over, close to 600 taps available for the build-out, so we don't believe that adding four more units in a great design in an infill project is a problem.
Okay.
At this time, when we get closer to 600?
Or, less than 600, when we get close to having just enough water to serve 100 taps, that's gonna be a very big issue for this community at that time.
It's always good to think ahead and plan ahead.
Anybody else at this point then? We'll encourage any more discussion between us, if not, we encourage a motion in a second.
Do you want to modify the limits or conditions?
I think if somebody else could word it better, then. It would be item number five.
So it might be appropriate under 2E, the final grading permit, with all of the BMPs required with that grading permit, and the erosion control plan? It could even be under a final stormwater management plan.
3C is the one that says it's staked, do you mean staked and some sort of fence? Is that what you mean?
Stakes and silt fence.
Correct, and monitored.
Well, surveyed, staked, and flagged, do you have?
So it would be item number C.
Under what number?
3C.
3C.
Where it says it's surveyed, staked, and flagged, seems there's some place to add and with a silt fence, or and with signs, or and whatever, or whatever.
They'll just protect them from having a problem anyway, really will.
I mean, because if they cut into it, and suddenly the water's diverted somewhere else, you know.
So how would you like to word that?
Silt fence tends to get run over by a truck anyways, too, so I mean, it's.
How about a silt fence shall be installed at the perimeter? How about a silt fence shall be installed at the perimeter of the floodway?
Is there a height or are they standard?
They're standard.
Okay.
And there's specifications as to how the silt fence shall be installed.
Don't add that on the flags.
Okay.
That's just going to protect you guys anyway.
Absolutely. I'm all for it. It's a great idea.
No further discussion, I'd like to make a proposal or a motion. I move that we approve FHDP 19-001, request for flood hazard development permit with the conditions stipulated by staff and the amendment by Ms. Good.
We have a motion in a second, but you call a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, beginning with Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
Yes.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
No.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Lee Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We look forward to watching it come out by the ground.
We're excited.
Very good.
We're looking forward to working with the city and everyone in.
Okay. Thanks again. We got two more things, we're going to finish up and we're going to take a break. Reports from either committee or commission or anything that the city, anything to talk about?
I have a few items I'd like to remind the commission of. First of all, on your desk is a one sheet that's titled Place Making Partners Strategies. This is a very quick summary of all of the various tasks that the main, the Main Street, DDA, Chamber, City Arts Alliance are working on to enhance placemaking in our downtown. And at the bottom of this sheet is a save this date. At the end of February, on February 26th, it's Wednesday evening, 6:30 to 8:30 at the cultural center, we're going to invite the community members, stakeholders in the community, business owners, property owners to come join us, review what we have accomplished in placemaking during the last year and where we're headed in the future. So we're looking for input as to what projects should be worked on to enhance our downtown area as an attractive place where people want to be, to eat, to socialize, to shop. And so wanted you to get this on your calendar, encourage you to join the Main Street group for that work session or that event.
And those dates again?
It's Wednesday, February 26th at 6:30 PM at the cultural center. Also wanted to remind you that we do have another meeting two weeks from tonight. We have a request from Mr. Bill Page to extend the best western PUD plan so that gets a review by the planning commission. You make a recommendation to city council as to whether you feel that extension should be granted. So we'll have a public hearing on that. And then we will also continue our work sessions regarding the single family projects in multi-family zones. And then I've also had a request from Caris Bible College. They are interested in modifying the electronic message display map so that they could possibly qualify for an electronic sign on Highway 24. So I've asked them to come speak with the planning commission in an informal work session before we take anything formally forward.
Anything else? Anything else for the good of the order? I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned for 10 minutes and then we're going to meet back here for the work session. This is potty time and want you to drink a water. We'll be back.
Actually not.